You're on record.
All righty, good evening, everyone. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Here.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Mr. Willins.
Here.
Chairman Kaplan.
Here.
Yes, our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer, Mr. Romanowicz.
Yes.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
All right, please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to...
Mr. Chadwick, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Romanowicz, do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, at this point, we will open the meeting to the general public. If there's anyone in the audience who has business to conduct with the board that is not on tonight's agenda, you may do so now. Okay, no one stepped forward. Resolutions. We have just that one, correct?
Yep.
Twenty-four twenty-eight, Ifran Hassan, 188 Edwards Road. Looks like this is a resolution of denial. We have Berkowitz, Grignani, Mazzarella, Petty, Quinn, and Ready. I have a motion.
Move.
No more.
Second.
Okay, Nora.
Berkowitz.
Just to clarify, yes vote is a denial, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Yes, denial to adopt the resolution.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Okay. Take care of that, and on to the main event application. Twenty-four oh-three, Tejal Patel, 93 Halsey Road. This is a carry from June 19th. Come on out. And if I recall, from the footage I watched, you were to consult an architect and come back with a proposal, a different proposal, based on the board's concerns, that you heard that.
Can you raise your right hands, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your names and spell your last name, starting with Uman.
Tejal. Pakel, P-A-T-E-N.
Speaking likely.
Your first name is Tejal, right?
Yes.
T-E-J-A-L?
Yes.
Okay. And you, sir?
Mahik Patel. M-A-H-I-K-P-A-T-E-L.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't you bring us up to speed? We have some revised plans in front of us.
So, we decided to take out that side addition that was initialed last time, and then just line it up with the house that is there currently, and then just do a little addition in the back, and then, we also took out the second-story addition, so just the addition in the back now.
You said you took out the second-story addition, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did we have a new report on this one? Do we have a zoning report?
No, it wasn't received in time to have a revised report taken care of.
The goal list, the new, the variances, the... The other one had a lot of variants.
I believe, yeah.
It's all right. Isn't this one the one that we did not have, place his reports on?
No.
Let me do that, Jack.
Uh...
A lot of silence up here. Anyone have any questions for the applicant? Well, it sounds like he reduced it.
What variants is he looking for?
This is the old one.
The addition would be in the front yard. Although it's in the back of his house, he's gone a lot. Front yard setback is long, uh, plenty as well, so that's would be a variance. I don't know whether or not he exceeds his previous coverage, I can tell.
It looks like on this plan here, the floor set, there's a zoning data table, it looks like.
When do you...
I have this one right here that's stamped July 19th. You have that?
Yes. Got a lot covered.
We just got it tonight.
Oh, okay.
All right, so we're, the lot coverage is three percent over, impervious.
The two...
No change from what it was.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it looks like the two, there were two variances the last time, one for front yard setback and one for building coverage. It appears that the front yard setback variance is no longer required with the change.
Right, together with the garage, right? That was in...
Yep.
Garage can go in there and stick out?
Mm-hmm. Remember, it kind of got close to that, that road.
Yeah.
You'll remember that. The only variance, it appears to be, is the building coverage variance.
This table was not prepared by justice. This was prepared by the dynamic.
Uh-huh.
And I think there's a mistake. The addition to the rear of the house is in the front yard of Flemington Road, and that setback is fourteen and a half feet, which is required.
Wasn't the testimony that they want...
Oh, wait a second. He's got this in a B-two zone. This is not a B-two zone. Well, yes, it is.
But didn't they want, in the original testimony, they wanted the front of the house to line up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't, I, you know, design... I forgot, this is a B-two zone, and there is an exception on the front yard of the B-two zone, so that they be correct.
So, you're asking for three percent over on the coverage?
Yep.
Do you have any discussions with your neighbors? Is there any water runoff that usually goes in either direction? Do you have a neighbor on either side, or no?
Uh, only on the, like, in their backyard and, like, our side yard areas.
On the side yard, you have a neighbor?
Yes.
Do they ever get water from you? Do they ever complain?
I don't think so, no.
Have you had discussions with them that they know what you're doing?
Uh, yes, we've sent out the letters and then informed everyone.
And no one has said anything to you?
No.
They are pulling out pavements in the back and one of the little sheds.
Yep.
So, the coverage should go down. But, no, the addition would be...
They're not removing the pavement or the shed, that's remaining. They, since they were asked to push it back, they were keeping the pavement where they were going to remove it before.
Well, the plan we have right here says fourteen-by-twenty-nine-foot driveway shall be removed.
Uh, that might be the previous one.
That's the old one.
This one still says we're removing.
I'm a little confused. What, what, what variances are we asking to be approved tonight?
Coverage.
Just the coverage?
Just coverage.
Yeah.
That's what's on the application, but on the documentation they submitted to us, impervious coverage would require a variance. That's a fairly hefty one.
That's what my question is.
Yeah, well, so I'm confused, where do you see that?
On this, on the architectural plan?
Zoning gate on the bottom.
Well, it says it's existing and they're not going to exceed what's existing.
So, maybe there was already a...
The dimension of the addition, the dimension of the addition is about three hundred and ninety-six square feet, and the fourteen-by-twenty-nine driveway removal is like four hundred and six square feet, so the driveway removal roughly equals the addition. So, that's why, that's why the impervious cover is kind of a wash.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you're going to remove three hundred and ninety-nine square feet of existing driveway?
Yeah.
The answer is yes. Well, it's written on the plan.
I, um, I've...
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, as, as written here, three ninety-nine square feet.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Nope. Yeah, actually, I'm looking at this one now, I guess this is the one from July 19th. It says removed already. What was removed already?
Oh, that's canopy.
The canopy?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if that was supposed to mean that...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's only a question I have.
Are there any question, any more questions from the board? Any questions of...
I guess, I did, I don't know if it was asked before, but the current house that you're heading onto, you know when it was built?
Nineteen sixty-five.
Nineteen sixty-five.
Okay, at this time, I will ask for any questions from the public of the applicants. You're announcing on, anyone in the public wish to speak for this application or against this application? Someone want to make a comment on this application?
Yeah, this is a significant improvement from the last meeting, so I'm in favor of this.
Okay. Application twenty-four colon zero-three, Tejal Patel, 93 Halsey Road, block two ninety-seven, lot nine, zone R-four, recommend grant a C-variance to construct a two-story addition. Is that it? That they remove this...
Does their condition be that they remove the three hundred and ninety-nine square feet of driveway?
Right, but there's no front landing and stairs. Is that true? Was that, is that all in there still?
There's no second story, is there? No second study. Yeah, there's no second story.
So, it's just front landing and stairs, front walk, side landing and stairs, drive, driveways and side and rear walk, contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, columns four and ten, and the removal of three hundred and ninety square foot of block top?
Yep.
Okay.
Second idea.
Driveways.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes. So, your application has passed. Congratulations. We appreciate the work you've done to go back and forth with us to make sure that this was an appropriate fit for the property. You will get, we will vote on the resolution at our next meeting, and then you are free to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Just really quick, I just want to make clear, because that will confuse them. After the resolution is memorialized, within ten days, I'll get it out to you, then you go to the zoning department for your zone impairment, and then you can go to construction.
Okay, got it.
You're almost there.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. That will bring us to application twenty-four thirty-four, Ajit Chandra, two forty-nine Atlantic Drive, seeking a C-variance to construct a walk. This should be pretty...
Can you raise your right hands, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Please.
Can you state each of your names, please? Spell your first and last names.
I'm Ajit Chandra. I spell it A-J-I-T. Last name C-H-A-N-B-R-A.
Thomas Wall, T-H-O-N-A-S, W-A-L-L.
Okay, you're here because it looks like you want to add a, was it pavers?
Yeah, paper walkway.
Paper walkway.
From the driveway to the patio, measuring fifty-five feet by four foot wide.
Thus putting you one point nine-two percent over what's allowed.
It's a simple paper walkway.
Any questions from the board?
Taken out from the driveway to the patio.
All right, someone want to make a comment?
If the soda minimums shouldn't be here in my opinion, so I'll be voting in favor.
Anyone on, oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone have any questions about the one point nine-two percent that these four people are here for? All right, anyone want to make a comment for or against?
I just did.
Okay, well, for the public, not, not the elite up on the dais. Okay, someone want to make a motion?
Application twenty-four colon thirty-four, Ajit Chandra, two forty-nine Atlantic Drive, block two sixty-three, lot number two, two dot zero-two, zone R dash four, to issue a grant C-variants to construct a walk, walkway.
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes. All right, you guys are all set.
Thanks for coming.
What Nora said before applies to you two.
Thank you.
You'll get, you'll hear from her, and get ready to go. You know, if you just took out one block, you probably would have been okay.
That's right.
Okay, application twenty-four twenty, Salah Elzain, eight eighty, Littleton Road. All right, looking at a major soil moving permit, C-variants for an open deck with landing and stairs and patio underneath the open deck.
Everybody? Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Please state your names, spell your first and last name, please.
Salah Elzain, S-A-L-Z-A-N.
All right, you may have a seat. We're going to do this whole presentation for three percent.
For that number.
Oh, it's the dirt, okay. So, it looks like we have a note here that says, square footage numbers have been reduced from the previous application, which I actually remember. The applicant's professional decided to remove the necessary variances at the last hearing. Okay.
Do you swear? No, not yet. Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, sir.
State your names, spell your last, first and last name, please.
Jeffrey Gogan, architect and planner, G-G-O-F-F-R-D-Y, thirty-five Pine Street, Morristown.
And you testified as an architect and planner before this board before, correct?
Yes, I have.
Is your license still in good standing?
Yes.
Oh, you're acceptable.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes.
I think the first question might be, how much soil are you proposing to import?
I'm sorry?
How much soil are you...
I guess we give both answers, right, at the same time?
Huh?
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
How much soil are you proposing to import?
Essentially, everything that we're here to show you tonight was already approved by the board when the house was originally approved, so that the numbers haven't changed, except that it's just a matter of how the coverage was calculated. It was a mistake in the calculation. So, the soil yardage is three hundred and eighty-eight, one, two, cubic feet, cubic yards, which is the same as what was shown to the board when it originally had it approved, but we just failed to, or never really realized that we had to have a soil moving application approved by the board because it's over a hundred yards. So, that's the only reason that we're back here. No change proposed to the site or the cutting or the filling.
Well, you're going to lift this whole site, yes?
A lot of it, there's a cutting, a cut fill diagram submitted to you. It shows the dark patching, which is the cutting and then the filling, is the light gray, but, yeah, it's a very steep slope, so it is being filled quite a bit to make it feltable.
Can you define quite a bit?
I'm sorry?
Can you define quite a bit, Bill?
Well, uh...
I think that's the first question.
The cutting is, I'm sorry, a little hard to read.
Quite a bit.
I think it's eighty-one cubic feet cut and four hundred and seventy-nine fill, so the net, the net is three ninety-eight.
Three ninety-eight what?
Cubic yards.
You'll be importing three hundred and ninety-eight cubic yards of soil, right?
That's, yes. The engineer has already reviewed it. We thought we'd be able to do that administratively after the approval, but that's when we found out that we needed to have the major soil application approved.
Approximately, how many trucks?
Um, I'm pretty sure, it's usually sixteen cubic yards per truck.
Thirty-five, thirty-five trucks.
So, if it's twenty-five trucks or so, you'll agree that you'll only be working the hours permitted from, not the weekends and all that stuff?
Probably a few days of trucking, and that'll all be supervised by the engineer, as far as the route, the source of the soil, and the whole operation.
So, the net after the cut is three ninety-nine?
Yes.
Okay. I assume you've seen the March twenty-fifth memo from the engineer?
I, it's March sixth of this year.
March twenty-fifth.
I don't think I received that.
He would have sent it to you.
To the owner?
The owner of the yard, I guess.
One of the things on his report says tree removal, no trees shall...
I do have a copy, March twenty-fifth, yes.
Twenty-four, yeah. And you agree to comply with all of those conditions?
Yes.
Is that, is that the first time you've seen the letter?
I, I just didn't recall that we had received it, but I, I must have just missed it, but, no, it's, it's consisted with what, I met with him twice, and we went over verbally, and he explained everything. We also do have the Morris County Soil Conservation District certificate for soil erosion control, and they will be supervising the tracking pad and all of the, all those things during construction.
So, you, you agree with, you are in compliance with the town engineer?
Yes.
Yes. Are there any trees that's left on this lot?
I'm sorry?
Are there any trees?
Yes, the trees were...
Any tree?
And we have them shown on the soil plan, there's one where the house is going to be located, it's being moved.
He asked if there's any remaining?
There's two more in the back.
Okay.
We didn't remove anything yet. No trees have been removed yet.
It's a total of five trees in that work area that are, that'll come down.
Yeah.
All right.
Are you going to replace them?
Um, I, I don't see why not. We have quite a few trees on this side already that are remaining.
Okay.
We could probably put a few more on the left side of the front, on the street side, if the board would like that. I don't see any problem with that.
We would like that.
No, because we are adjacent to Department of Transportation, they have a lot of trees in one house.
Okay.
All right, any other questions from the board?
The, the is all right.
I just want to make sure, sir, that you said you just got this note from the engineer. I just want to confirm with you, is everything on there, you're in agreement to do, okay?
Pre-construction meeting, the fees, inspection fee, performance guarantees, two thousand dollars, if you'd like to check and get that back after everything is done properly.
They're going to give me two thousand dollars?
They're going to give you your two thousand dollars.
And protection of trees, any apartment, any removals, yeah, this is all fine.
We agree with that, yes. I will deliver that, I promise.
You've seen this.
I will, yeah.
Good, very good.
Thank you.
Any final questions? Any questions from the public of this applicant? No one's come forward.
If I can interrupt, I just want to point out that this application is also for a deck, which you have that information in front of you, five hundred square foot open deck with landing and stairs and three hundred fifty-five square foot patio under the deck. So...
Yeah, right.
It's unchanged.
Is that new?
No, well, it's, it's, uh, the deck was...
I thought the only, you testified the only new thing was the soil.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm sorry if this came across a long way, but we are here for a deck variance, and when, when the house was approved, back about a year ago now, the deck was shown on there, and the board was aware of the deck, but we were making the most of the exception, the ordinance under the arts and courts, where you allow the four percent in excess of building coverage, we read it as coverage, and we just didn't realize you had to, that it did not apply to improved lot coverage. It only applies to building coverage, according to the zoning officer. So, when we went for the zoning permit, thinking everything was fine, she caught that and said, you should have listed the coverage of the deck as improved lot coverage, because it's not accepted the way building coverage is. I hope that's clear. I have the language, I wouldn't mind reading it to you. It's a, it's a sentence or two that provides for that.
What, what is the deck made of, like, Trex or something?
Yeah, it's a wood, it's standard wood.
So, the water's going to go through that?
Yeah.
What's under it?
There's a patio underneath, right? There's a patio under it.
Made of what?
Uh, pavers, concrete pavers.
So, it will have a porous, what's, what's it bound by? What's in between the pavers?
Uh, like a, a, a polymer sand or some, some kind of a...
That will allow water to flow through?
Yes.
John, do you have any opinion on that one?
I, I just make the condition the resolution.
Okay.
It was, it was an oversight.
No offense, this application was a mess from go, and it just seems to continue to be.
But no offense.
I said that, didn't I? You weren't offended, were you?
None intended, but it is a fact.
Yes.
I like the second thought.
Thank you.
Good one, Chris.
Okay, all right. Given that new, bit of information, I will ask the board again if they have any other questions, and I will ask the public again if they have any questions for this applicant. No one's come forward, I don't even know if we have public here, to be honest with you. Anyone in the public want to make a comment for or against this application? And anyone, someone on the board, make a statement about this application, please? I guess the fact that it is going to let the water run through, and that the engineer has sent the letter that you guys have agreed to abide by, I will be voting for it. Someone wants to frame a resolution?
Application twenty-four colon twenty, Salah Elzain, eight eighty, Littleton Road, block one ninety-five, lot number thirteen, zone R dash three, to issue or grant a major soil moving permit, C-variants for an open deck with landing and stairs, patio, contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, column thirteen.
Should be made up of...
In compliance, conditions, I know, the applicant agreed to the board engineer's recommendations, as well as the patio with, what, sand, not, not, not the concrete one.
Right.
And replace the trees that are to be removed?
Replace, yes. Remodel of the trees, replace with the new ones.
Second, Jaskiewicz.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, our friends from Liquid Church, application 2425, seeking a minor site plan with D variance for child daycare and to construct a playground, presumably for the child daycare.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Linda Hurlehy, I'm an attorney with the firm of Riker Danzig, and we're representing the applicant tonight. Just by way of a very brief background, as the board may recall, this applicant has received prior approvals in connection with this property to allow the existing house of worship and cafe uses, as well as variances previously related to signs, parking, and impervious coverage. As the chairman mentioned, this application tonight is for a daycare use at the building. They're proposing to convert or to utilize, I shouldn't say convert, to utilize about 7,500 square feet of space in the building for a daycare Monday through Friday. That space is currently used for children's programming on Sundays, so it's repurposing or using the space additional time during the week, as well as an outdoor playground in connection with that daycare use. The other part of the application is to replace or reface a freestanding sign, a monument sign at the property. The sign itself, the structure is not going to change, it'll be the same size and shape and the same structure, it's just going to be replaced. And we'll have testimony tonight with respect to the, the question that came up with the Chick-fil-A logo. You'll hear testimony, the explanation of how Chick-fil-A interplays with the, the cafe use, and, and why that's being proposed to be on the sign. So that's sort of an overview of what we're here for. Two witnesses tonight, Pastor Dave Brooks, as well as our engineer and planner. So unless there's any questions initially, I'd like to just, so I'd like to call.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you were about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, the government truth? State your names, spell your first and last name, please.
David Brooks, D.A.V.I.D., B.R.O.O.K.S.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can proceed.
Pastor Brooks, if you would, please tell the board, for those who may not know, what your role and responsibilities are with the applicant?
Yeah, I'm the executive pastor at the church, and I have responsibility for strategy and the support systems of the church.
And in that, you're familiar with the day-to-day operations of the church?
Yes, I am.
And can you give us an, just an overview of the, the church and its current operations in the building at this time?
Sure. Liquid is a nonprofit, non-denominational Christian church. We primarily have services on Sunday at 9:00, 10:30, and 12:00, but we also use the building for ministry purposes during the week. We have youth activities on Friday and Sunday nights, and then we have groups that meet there during the week. We also have a cafe that operates and employs adults with special needs, we thank you for your approval on that previously, and I'm thankful to say that we now employ 17 adults with special needs who are learning employment skills in the building community, and we're very proud of them. We were kindly featured in the Parsippany Focus in February, thanks to Frank Cahill, but we felt that was a, a big success that allows people in our community with special needs to have opportunities to get gainful employment.
And can you describe what the proposed daycare use will be?
So we plan to have this for kids who, from birth up until kindergarten, not kindergarten, but up until kindergarten. It would be Monday through Friday, open from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. As Linda said, we're going to take four of our rooms that are used for children's programming on Sunday, and then just change the furniture a little and use them for the preschool and daycare during the week. We plan to open this to everybody in the community, obviously, church members, kids would be welcome, but we would also want it for Parsippany and Morris County residents. We want it similar to the cafe, we want to be able to not only serve our community, but serve the greater community. I talked with the mayor, and he had said that he felt this was a good opportunity, because there's always a need for good childcare in communities. We will have, starting out probably about six staff as we begin, but we're going to keep a 10 to 1 ratio, and may end up having 15 staff with the projected potential of having 130 kids in the program after we build it up. We plan to use what we call our west parking area to support the preschool, so we would have a place for parents to come in and drop off their kids using that parking lot, that presently is used by our staff, that they can move to the north parking lot where there are 500 spots, but this west parking lot where there are 100 spots, we would basically take the, the first 30 to 40 and segregate that just for the preschool, so the parents can stop there, get out, bring their kids in, check them into the classroom, and then, and then get back.
And with respect to the, the sign aspect of the, of the application, this is, as I mentioned, just a, a change in the face or the change in the text of the sign, correct?
Yeah, so the, the existing five foot by eight foot by eight inch deep aluminum sign will not change, we just plan to change the aluminum facing on the front with the acrylic, acrylic lettering, and so we just add lettering for this particular, for the preschool, and then we would, we also have on there that we would include this logo for Chick-fil-A.
And why don't you explain to the board your relationship with Chick-fil-A?
So, um, we consider Chick-fil-A just to be another supplier, similar to Costco and Cisco, Anthony's Bakery and Hot Bagels, they supply us five menu options, Monday through Thursday, so we get two sandwiches, one wrap, two salads, that we pick up at 11:30, and then we have that as a menu item for lunch in the cafe if people come in. Our average sales in 2022 and 2023 were about 17 items a day. It's grown to about 25 items in, in 24, but it really hasn't created a significant amount of traffic, enough that we think it's worth having as an additional menu item, and Chick-fil-A has given us the option of using their logo. So it's inside on our menu board, and then we would want to put it on the signage outside as well.
And you're using that to teach life skills?
Yes.
Is that, is that just for associates that work there, or is that for any?
For anybody, for anybody that uses, because it's open to the public, so anybody that wants to come in can use it.
And since, and so just to clarify, so you've, you've been selling the Chick-fil-A items now for?
Yeah, since the inception. So we, we started in October of 2023, and we started this partnership with Chick-fil-A at that point, so we've been selling these items for the last 20 months.
And there was, in fact, a point in time where there was a Chick-fil-A logo actually on your sign?
Yeah, we didn't realize that was a mistake, we had put a new sign in, that was added once we started this application, and I realized that hadn't been approved, we took that off earlier this year. We've seen sales continue to, to increase, not appreciably during this period, but we did have a sign for a while.
And during the time that you had the sign, while you may have seen sales increase and continue to increase, did you experience any traffic or parking or circulation issues during the lunchtime when, you know, until those items sold out?
Right. No, I mean, when you, when you think about the volume of sales we have, we basically make a sale now about every seven minutes, previously with about every 10 minutes, so it really has an increased traffic that would impact parking. We have plenty of parking on the north side that people can use when they come to the cafe, so we haven't seen any issues with parking or traffic.
Which side? So you have the north side where this traffic is, what about the daycare? Which side is that?
The daycare is going to be on the west side, that's going to be their entrance.
So what I'm wondering then is what, maybe one of the, maybe the expert's going to do this, what traffic, uh, safety measures are you taking now that you, you are asking for five-year-olds and under, who can sometimes sprint away from mom or dad in a parking lot?
Sure.
What precautions are you proposing in this, to support the daycare?
So that's where we're saying, the cafe uses the north parking lot, because it's the one that's closest to the cafe, this west parking lot is where, what we would propose using for the daycare, and then we will have this segmented area during the week, Monday through Friday, where parents can come in and quickly get to the sidewalk and then get into the building and not have to move across.
Are you going to stripe a crosswalk?
What?
Are you going to stripe a crosswalk where people, is a designated area to cross, where drivers know to pay attention, look for little kids?
Generally on the week, the only people who would be there would be our staff and people coming in to the daycare. So our staff will all be, will already know about the needs for the daycare. We hadn't planned on putting in any striping, we had considered temporary signage that would be just put up during the week, that would designate those particular slots.
And the parents have to come in with the child, his nose, curb?
Yeah, the, the way the security works, we want the parent dropping off the child in the classroom, so there's security with them, they have to have a key fob that only they and other authorized people can get into the classrooms, and they have to pick their child up at the classroom, so nobody else is authorized to drop them off or pick them up.
Are you licensed by the state?
We will be.
You will be, okay. How many students, how many children are you expecting?
You know, initially, we're, we're figuring we're going to have about 40 or 50, but we could grow to 130, we have the capacity to grow to 130.
And what would the staff ratio be to the 130?
10 to 1.
Okay, so 13 staff members.
No bussings involved?
No.
Uh, I, I think it would behoove you to have a striped crosswalk, a designated crossing area where you can also put up a permanent sign that says, whatever the wording is, "Drivers must stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk," I really think that that would be a wise move for you, both for the safety of the children and also just for your own liability sake.
I might be jumping the gun here, but it says construct a playground too, where's that going to be located and?
Mr. Hanson's going to bring up the plan.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? No one, for the record, unless you have something to say, Mr. Cahill, no one from the public is here.
This is John Hanson, who is, I know he's appeared before this board before, both our civil engineer and planner.
Raise your right hand, please, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you were about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, the government truth?
I do.
State your names, spell your first and last name, please.
John Hanson, J.O.H.N., P.J.A.N., S.E.N.
Thank you. I, as I said, I know Mr. Hanson has been here before, would you like me to go through his qualifications?
Are you still licensed?
I am, I'm licensed in New Jersey as a professional engineer, professional planner, and both my licenses are on this.
Can you be qualified before this board previously?
I have.
He's acceptable.
John, you would go through the, the plan that was submitted as part of the application?
Sure. So this is a plan set that I have here, it's the plan set that you should have on file, it's dated 2/26/2024, and it's got five sheets in the set. So, you know, I'll be brief and just kind of talk about the existing conditions and what we're planning to do on the, on the site. This is block 736, lot 20, it's known as 299 Webrow Road, the entire property acreage is just over 11 acres, it's about 11.256 acres, it's located in the SED 5 zone. So the last approval that we were here for, which I was involved in, we did an expansion to the parking lot, occupied the church throughout the entire building, and was a big application with underground stormwater system and so on and so forth. So that application approved a variance for the impervious coverage of 79%, so the property right now is at 78.97%, just under that, that limit. And what we're proposing to do is simply construct a outdoor playground associated with childcare center, as Mr. Brooks has described, and it's positioned in location, and I'm pointing to on sheet two, the overall map, which shows the entire site, and we've nestled it into the northwest corner of the building, so there's a little jog in the building there, there's a man door in that location, so students would be brought from the inside of the facility through the man door into this outdoor playground. The outdoor playground will be ported off with six-foot-high fence, so it's safe, and basically blocks the playground equipment and the shade structure that's built towards inside. So inside of the, the fenced area, which would be 30 feet from the building by 80 feet long, will be your typical playground equipment, walkways, and then the, the surface that you would see is like a synthetic turf-type surface that you showed in the plan. So that surface, since we're talking about impervious coverage, even though it's impervious type material, it's designed so the water goes through it, the regulations require us to consider it impervious, all right, so the entire impervious surface that we're proposing as part of the project will increase by 3,183 square feet. So as a condition of approval, if the board approves the project, we'd work with Mr. Milo Manowich to make sure that our stormwater management accounts for that, and we've talked to him, or associates have informed us, talked to him, and basically we have a plan for how we'll do that, to look after the water underneath, make some minor modifications to the outlet structure, and go on our way. So also part of the, of the project is landscaping, and I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention here, so if you turn to sheet four, you see that we have a pretty extensive landscaping plan. So the playground will be positioned over some turf area and some landscaped area that's currently there now, so that'll be removed to make for the playground, but as part of the project, we'll have a significant amount of additional landscaping to not only buffer the fence, but to also add to the north side of the property. So if you've been to the property lately, you'll see that there are some big columnar-type landscaping on the north side, but there's some voids in there, and, you know, the, the church, to their credit, really wanted to beautify the site, and so the part of the project is to fill that in.
Can I just interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
It does not appear that the board has a set of these plans.
We don't.
That's okay.
Yeah, so you, could you, you're just going to need to mark those as an exhibit?
Sure.
Since the board doesn't actually have a set of these? We have, it looks like we, the board received some, a set, one sheet on April 10th, but not these five sheets.
Mr. Hanson, what's the date on that again? Date of those plans?
February 26th.
With no revisions?
No revisions.
Yeah, those are the plans I have, five sheets?
Yes. Marketing one?
Yes, please.
John, the landscaping plan, I reviewed that the new landscaping was primarily, that the deck was grasses, did I misread the plan, or am I correct?
Yeah, right now out there, you have some Russian sage, you have, you know, brasses, and there's, yeah, basically the landscaping is, you know, drought-tolerant type, deer-resistant type landscaping, so they've tried to keep that, you know, I think it looks good, it's tasteful, but that being said, if there are certain suggestions to the landscaping?
I would think evergreen shrubs would add some variety to it, and it's.
And we'd be happy to do that.
And I'll leave that up to your designers and not just looking over.
Okay. We'd be happy to do that as a condition of any approval. One other feature as part of our site plan is, you'll notice in this area, if you've been to the site, I'm pointing to the northwest corner of the site, there's a flagpole with a couple of steps out to it, and what they'd like to do is make this a little bit more of a welcoming area here, so they're adding about 450 square feet of brick pavers, to just make that a little more of a welcoming area and around the flagpole. So no change to the flagpole or anything, but just some additional impervious coverage there. So, in short, we're here for a D variance, because this is not permitted use in the zone, however, it is an inherently beneficial use, childcare centers are known by the courts and staff, and then we're also here for a small C variance for the increase in impervious coverage. So we were approved for 79%, we're at 79.62%, it's a very small increase, but nonetheless, we need your approval for that. So just to get into, unless there's any questions, I'll just get into the variance testimony.
I, I, I just had one question, where the, the, the outdoor area is, and it's going to be fenced off from the parking lot, I guess.
It's, it's totally fenced off, it'll be a white vinyl six-foot-high fence, so you won't see the, the pertinences inside, and it'll be safe, so the kids won't be able to get out.
No, I just, you think it should, you think it would make any sense to put some bollocks in front of the fence?
Well, the fence is set back so that it won't be, a car won't be able to hit it, it's, it's basically offset from the parking lot. So you have the parking lot, oh, let me just show you here. So in this dash box area, this is where the playground would go, and here's your parking over here, so there's just no possible conflict with vehicles.
Okay, I was highly concerned.
Any other questions on the engineer?
My question was about the fence as well, just to, you answer it.
Oh, you know, the one thing I did want to mention too, the chairman had said it about the crosswalk, so what I'm pointing to here is the west side of the building, and all of this head-on parking here is all adjacent to a sidewalk, so essentially, the, the parents can park up against the sidewalk, they'll, they won't have to cross any traffic, they'll be able to get the kid right out of the car, walk right onto the sidewalk, and then walk right into the building. So there, you know, frankly, there, there just isn't a need for a painted crosswalk, I think all of these, you know, are very safe.
We've got 130 people dropping off, I know not all at the same time. I know not all at the same time, but how, how far is that curb where parents are going to park along the curb for drop-off purposes?
I can count up the spaces here. It looks like there's about 40 spaces there. Yeah, so there's a significant amount of spaces, I think.
For longer term?
Yeah.
Forty people can park, and no one needs to cross the parking lot?
That's right.
Okay.
Just, where's the playground there, that rectangle?
Well, this is just the detail of where it is on the map, but it's right in this northwest corner.
And then just where would the roadway be where the cars are driving? I think Bernie kind of asked this already, but...
So we have, this is the main entrance over here with the access that comes in. There's a two-way entrance only, and then you have the access over here. So this is between the two, no ability for parking or access.
But they would be going outside of it, right? I guess my, my thought is, and maybe I'm being overly cautious or thinking the worst-case scenario, but a car loses control, goes through that fence, and there's kids there? I don't know, maybe like concrete ballast or something? I don't know. It's just, it's just a thought in my head, just for safety for the kids, that's all.
Understood. I think the, I mean, I could talk to Mr. Brooks about it, and we'd be happy to look at that one more time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking worst-case scenario, but that's just me.
Is, if there are students, several children in the fenced-off area, is there any way for them to get out of that fenced-off area without going back into the building? So if there's a fire in that room, how do we keep the kids safe?
Interesting. Okay, so the question is, if there's a fire in the building, can they get out through the fence?
Can they get out through the fence? So could we put a one-way door?
Maybe we have two gates.
There's gates, okay.
The gates that are armed, so they're open, and the teachers know how.
Are you opening anything other than a white vinyl fence, some muted color or something that doesn't shine when lights in it or?
What would be the suggestion?
Do they make material that is, you know, very light grays, that doesn't have the sheen that some of those white fences have there?
Yeah, the brick is kind of an off-white. Maybe we'll get something different.
Yeah, I think it would be sitting better than just that stark white fence.
Understood. If no other questions, I'll just get to the planning testimony. So as I mentioned, this is inherently beneficial use. It's a D1 variance with inherently beneficial uses, and I'm sure the board is aware of the positive criteria, essentially, or of course, have understood that this is, promotes the public welfare, the general welfare. So really, you look at the negative criteria, and if the negative criteria is established, there's no substantial detriment, then, you know, the board should hopefully approve the variance. So in this case, really, the CECA test, the CECA courts are what governs, it's a four-part test. I'll just go through it briefly. The first part is evaluate the public interest served by the inherently beneficial use. Obviously, the public interest here is childcare. Identify any adverse consequences of granting the variance. We feel as though none. Of course, the public, the parking works, the traffic works, and the site's going to be landscaped appropriately. It says consider conditions which might be imposed to mitigate any adverse consequences. In our opinion, that's not applicable, although we do have a lot of landscaping that I think will naturally mitigate the development. And then finally, balance the public interest in granting the variance versus the adverse impact as lessened by any conditions imposed by the board, and determine whether on balance, whether there would be a substantial detriment to the public good if the variance is granted. And so in my opinion, as a professional planner, I believe we passed the CECA test. I believe that there's no adverse impacts here, and the project is worthy of your approval. And then lastly, we do have this C variance for the impervious coverage. I believe that's subsumed within the D, but nonetheless, I would, I would say that it would be a C2 variance if you found it to be that, that way, and not subsumed within the D. And really, here again, you know, the purposes of the municipal land use law would be granted, which would lower the positive criteria, creating a desirable visual environment, which is Purpose A, landscaping. We have Public A, which is promotion of the public good and the general welfare, and there's no substantial detriment, certainly no detriment at all, in my opinion. So I believe that the board can feel comfortable that they can grant both these variances. And then lastly, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
I was going to say, lastly, we did get the memo from Mr. Lemanowicz, and I said we, my associate has been able to talk to him. I read through the memo, and I believe that we can satisfy his conditions. The project is exempt with respect to the Highlands. We can address the stormwater management and the other administrative issues that he had.
And that was what I was about to ask you. Thank you.
And just for the board's information, I did speak, as Mr. Hanson said, with them, there will be some modifications required, but I don't see there's a, I don't anticipate there being a game changer here when we try to work that out. The amount of impervious is minor compared to the amount of impervious in the original design, so just some modifications. It would certainly seem that that's possible to make this work, because this is still considered a major development for stormwater, because once you start a major development, it's going to stay a major development, in spite of the fact this is a fairly minimal increase in impervious.
Agreed. All right. That's it. Okay. Questions from the board?
Nope.
No.
And there's still no public here, so we will dispense with that. Anybody want to make a comment?
Sure. I think it's a pretty easy application. They agreed to do everything that the engineer had asked. I think they've been good neighbors doing good things, so I'll be voting for it.
Okay. Framed resolution, anyone?
Application number 25, colon, 24, colon, 25, Liquid Church, 299 Webrow Road, Block 736, Lot 20, Zone SED-5, minus, minor site plan with D variance for child daycare, and to construct a playground with agreeing to everything stipulated by the engineer. Am I missing anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second, Eddie.
Burke Williams.
Yes.
Josh Williams.
Yes.
Asherella.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willan.
Yes.
Catherine.
Yes. All right. That was all of that.
Thank you.
At this point, we're going to go into closed session, and got to read the speech. It says, Frank, get out. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Adjustment is one of, is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township of, wow, good timing, Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Adjustment wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege regarding...
We're going into close right now.
...Pacifica Outdoor and PTH BOA, and whereas the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills BOA wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege regarding Danny Realty versus Park Troy Hills BOA, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving confidentiality of the above is no, no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Adjustment that the public be excluded from this meeting. Thank you, everybody.
You said, you know what happens? The state...